If you would, please all rise. At this time, I'll call on Commissioner Burrows to have our invocation and the pledge to our flag.
To heaven above, we gather here today, we come before you with a humble heart seeking your guidance and blessing upon us. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve our community and ask for your wisdom and all our decision. We lift up our county in prayer, bless our residents, our employees, and our leadership. Grant us the strength of work together harmoniously and the wisdom to make decisions that benefit all. We also thank our volunteers, especially our first responders, law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency service personnel who suffered the service and provided the touch and support our county. The grave commitment they displayed when they responded to my home this past weekend, particularly appreciated by me and my family. As I stand before you today, I'm filled with endless gratitude for the opportunity to serve, lucky for the experience, the challenges, and the growth that this role has brought me. May this prayer be our last testament for my group in Green County's continued growth, prosperity, and unity. Bless our proceedings today, and may we always seek to serve with integrity, compassion, and dedication. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. At this time, we'll have the oath of office for our recently elected commissioners. At this time, I'll ask our resident Superior Court Judge, Amelia Payne, to come forward. And Commissioner Burrows and Commissioner-elect Bobby Taylor, if you would step down for the oath of office with your bibles. And if any of the family members wish to come up. I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand if you repeat after me.
I can't repeat, I just said, I'll get word and I'll step right here. What I'll do is-
Read it for you.
I, state your name.
Derek Burrows.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Green County Board of Commissioners, so help you God?
Adieu.
And do you, Derek Burrows, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? And do you, Derek Burrows, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of the Green County Board of Commissioners according to the best of your skill and abilities, so help you God? Congratulations. And Mr. Taylor. You place your left hand on the bible, left hand on the bible, raise your right hand, and if you repeat after me. Do you, Robert Taylor, Jr., solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as a member of the Green County Board of Commissioners, so help you God? And do you, Bobby Taylor, excuse me, do you, Robert Taylor, Jr., solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? And do you, Robert Taylor, Jr., solemnly and sincerely swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the office of the Green County Board of Commissioners according to the best of your skill and abilities, so help you God? Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Bate, and congratulations to Bobby.
Thank you. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for chairman.
I'm going to nominate Benny Heath for chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Move, move, close nomination.
So move.
Second.
On favor of electing Mr. Benny Heath to remain chairman of the Green County Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Chairman Heath.
At this time, I will take nominations for the election for vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Jerry Jones for vice chairman.
I have a nomination for Jerry Jones for vice chairman. Anyone else?
Move the nominations, they're closed.
Have a motion, the nominations, they're closed, and a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion's carried, carries. And we'll take about a five-minute brief intermission. You have in your commissioner packets the proposed agenda for today's meeting, or is there a change or any need to the proposed agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the agenda for today's meeting.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. We have some information to discuss, the public, the review of the 2025 board appointments. This is for information.
That's right.
And I will say that on the transportation board, Commissioner Shackelford was the commissioner that was appointed to serve there. Commissioner Bobby Taylor is already on that board. I would just recommend that Commissioner Taylor, if you're willing to continue to serve on that board, you will be the commissioner on the board for, on the transportation board for the commissioner board.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I do want to bring that up and-
Yes, sir.
Get that settled. Any discussion, or just want to move on to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion.
On the December 7th, it has been corrected, it's been corrected, it's been read and drawn.
Yes, there was, uh, months was changed to years in one minute. And then there was a 2024 where twenty, I believe, got knocked out, so-
Two oh two got knocked out, that was just four.
It was just four, so we corrected that.
Yeah.
For your review and approval.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion's carried. Public comments?
There was one, Mr. Teresa Burrows.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't plan on telling you here to do this. But this weekend, oh, I forgot, everybody, my name, Teresa Burrows. This weekend, I might get emotional for that three minutes of it. I might get emotional for that three minutes of it. But anyway, this weekend, we had a barn sheltered fire. And by the grace of God, my little dog saved us. I knew it was her time to go outside and party. And I was trying to catch another five minutes of sleep. But when I turned my head, I was asleep, I fell asleep, and but finally, when I turned my head, I looked up into the sun window. And it was too late for getting ready that time in the morning. And I said, and she wouldn't shut up. And I was back there, papa honey. But anyway, so I decided to get up and go sit, and then I did. And we had, the fire, the barn had caught fire. We had electrical shorters. Or had plugged the hot water heater in for my horse, so his water would not be froze. But anyway, we were running around trying to get our clothes on, calling 911. And we lived outside and we already had some things there. It was very emotional. But the reason I'm here right now, we got to get rid of all of that stuff that we had in the barn. Yes, I know, it was material thing. It wasn't alive, so it was not valuable. But this is what I'm gonna make pretty good, to haul it off to the landfill. And what I'm trying to do, due to the situation, this is gonna take me too a little while to get all, all, all. It's waste the landfill feed for me. We lost two holidays, generator, all my power tools, M C, his pressure washer. Like no telling when all I had in there, you know, one wouldn't back it all up. And I had all of my Christmas decorations. But what I'm asking you, as my queen, to help me to waive this landfill fee.
What's the wish of the board?
I moved it that way, waive the fee.
Second. Have a motion and a second and a third to waive the fee. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay.
Thank y'all, have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you.
And the second was?
There's two. And Bobby, third.
I'm gonna respect it, I don't know what you're talking about.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Going forward for disasters of this sort, do we have anything in place for county residents to-
That's a good question.
To have that and maybe going forward?
A natural disaster.
You know, I mean, natural disaster, we usually-
Natural disaster generally follows the FEMA guidelines or state Department of Emergency Management's guidelines. And you guys make that motion based on what they say. For this type of thing, this is very infrequent. I think I remember one other, and it was a church.
Yeah.
A past year house up 58. Beyond that, that's the only thing I know. If you'd like a policy created, we'd be more than happy to-
I think it's something we could look at. I mean, I know, I know if it would've been arson, if it's ever proven to be arson, that insurance companies probably would take care of that if there is insurance. But other than arson, I think it would be something wise to kind of implement or see what we, see if we can entertain some, some type of offer to residents for that type of thing.
Anyone else have, anyone else have public comments?
No, sir.
It would really be nice, it would really be nice if they had maybe like town stuff, you know, to have maybe one time a year where they could take the crash off. And get rid of the stuff that needs to, because you know, a lot of people just starting to crash, you know, it's, it's starting to become a hazard. It's like looking more, you know, permission drop, you gotta work real hard, kind of clean up. I think if you had one time a year, more crashes, you know, picking and taking stuff off, it'd make Green County like winners. You know, if there was one day a year to wait for some-
We can look into that, but I'm hesitant because I believe the town of Snow Hill has a landfill refuse collection company is what it would be. Whereas we have a, we have two fees that go on taxes. Where based on those fees and the way those fees are set, we aren't expecting that influx of what could be junk from the surrounding of town or the whole county. We just have to really review that and set our rate to adjust for that, if that's the direction the board commissioner wanted to go.
We'll take that into consideration. We have no one else for public comments. I call on Mr. Trey Cash.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Green County was recently awarded $45,000 for a new economic development strategic plan. $30,000 come from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and 15 is marked from the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission. This is the first time the commission has awarded Green County money for something. Last week, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Burrows, and myself toured the commission around Green County. It was a great honor. They called and said that they're coming to Eastern North Carolina, and we were the only county they wanted to come look at. So we are very fortunate that. We went to Precision Graphics, and we went to Continue Farms. And then the school gave a short presentation, so we were very fortunate, and we were very fortunate to receive this grant funding. Over the past 18 months, economic developments received over $250,000 in grant funding. And we're very fortunate and hoping that continues. So unless there's any questions, I ask for the boards of the grant.
What's the wish of the board?
Same move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion's carried unanimously.
Thank you, Trey.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. Just a few items for your action this morning. The first being appointment for the chairman of the Green County Transportation Committee. Recently, now Commissioner Bobby Taylor was the chairman of the Green County Transportation Committee. And part of the bylaws of the Green County Transportation Committee does not allow an elected official to serve as the chairman. Knowing that Mr. Taylor was the commissioner-elect at that time, the Green County Transportation Committee unanimously nominated Mr. Harold Thomas to serve as their next chairman, as he qualifies based on the parameters of the bylaws. If there are no questions, I would ask for approval, your approval of Mr. Thomas as the chairman, or if there's any questions you may have at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should go along with Green County Transportation Committee's wishes, so therefore I move to nominate Harold Thomas to chair this committee.
Say it.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. My next item for your attention this morning is the proposed 2025 regular meeting schedule. This schedule follows the same pattern and format as our past 10 o'clock morning meetings, 7:00 PM evening meetings. I would say that I have heard requests from a commissioner about changing a second meeting to an earlier evening meeting. And whatever the board commissioners prescribes, staff will gladly do.
I would entertain an idea of this nightly meeting being a little earlier if possible.
Staff would be happy with 2:00 in the afternoon. But whatever you decide, we'll happily show up and come prepared.
What's the wish of the board?
I'd like to leave it like it is right now. I'd like to play it on the 6:00 later on.
I like 6:00.
Get up at 5:00, so-
I did mention what you had mentioned, is at 6:00.
I probably, I think I would go with, with the request of 6:00 would be, would work better for me, but I can make any time from, from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, so.
Well, okay.
Serve at the wish of the majority, so-
The majority would like 6:00. If we want to form a motion-
Please, and I'll move-
With somebody to make a motion for 6:00.
I make a motion, we move the meeting to 6:00 PM if, uh-
From 7:00.
From 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
I'm gonna tell you why I say 6:00, you know, people like Sharon and George, they come down meeting, it's a long time for them to have to wait after leaving, so I thought it's just be kind of a neutral time.
Thank you for their consideration.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Now we have discussion after there's a motion and a second. Anything else?
Either way, I'm easy to get along.
Okay, those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, the motion's carried. It will be 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Starting this December 16th?
That misses it, well, the actual schedule begins in January.
Yes.
So we've already proved 7:00 through this year. So we can still go hunting before 7:00 on the 16th.
What am I thinking about, sir, if I don't say any of you?
Continue on.
My next item for your approval is the proposed 2025 holiday schedule. The holiday schedule, as has in years past, follows the state holiday schedule. This is because it doesn't have to make dollars and cents for them to be open when we are not, or vice versa. If you'd like to maintain this schedule that aligns with theirs, I'd ask for a motion for your approval.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Lastly is an informational piece, and it is the proposed 2025 trash convenience sites holiday schedule. And that is based on their contract document, that is a July 1st to June 30th document. Just wanted you to be aware of that. Your vote is needed. And that's all I have for this, sir.
Okay. I do have one, I'd like to call it a public hearing for the Green County Board of Commissioners on January the 6th, 2025, at 10:00 in the morning here at the Operations Center 312, Southeast 2nd Street, as to discuss the potential acquisition of real property through a land option agreement for economic development, similar to the one that we're going to have on the 16th of this month. So we'll call for that public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
And Madam Attorney, do you have any pearls of wisdom for us today?
I promise.
Okay. I will say that as commissioner reports and recommendations, don't forget that we have the downtown extravaganza here in Snow Hill on Friday evening. Starts at 6:00. And secondly, also, the Christmas parade will be at 2:00 on Saturday afternoon. Do have those two events coming up. Any other commissioner reports and recommendations?
I would like to recognize government fire department for since receiving a five ISO on their fire inspection. I appreciate the hard work, and it helped get those people's insurance down.
And that is great.
Sure is.
Thank all, all the fire departments for doing that.
Any other commissioner reports or recommendations?
I would think all the first responders, I think, mom said it better than I could, you know. I'm gonna tell you, as a firefighter myself, you're trained to start putting the shirt on and all that, and I'm gonna tell you, I apologize, it's, it's a lot different. That whole world is burned up. I mean, my dad won the chair, and the fire was a must for that TV screen there, so you know. You first look out, it's like the whole world is burned up. So I, as a firefighter, I'm a little bit embarrassed, I apologize, I bet not know about what to do. And then as soon as I got outside, I got my clothes on, it's like, I wanted to chill up. And that's what I'm trained to do, right?
As long as nobody got hurt, that was the main thing.
That's right.
All the other stuff can be replaced.
And I realized, you know, I realized, quickly realized, this, this fire was not my fire to fight. Like I said, I'm trying to put my shirt on, go to work. Because you have to realize, you know, it's not your, you gotta realize, you're at an impound, do your time. It was very emotional time. I tried not to show my emotion. I'm definitely thankful for the people that showed up. And I'll be honest with you, prior to that, before I even called 911. And I started calling 911, as soon as I started- And I started calling the 911 as soon as I saw, you know, like I said, my, my thoughts, because it gets you to the, I dropped the phone. I'm glad Brock and them were there before. I even got a chance to talk to dispatch. So I'm very thankful for that, like I said. So you first look out, it's like the whole world. Because that's how you can see out the window. Very emotional, sir, I really appreciate that, buddy. So, and we also have some firefighters from other departments who didn't get dispatch to come too, so I'm thankful they're helping out too.
And it goes without saying, thanks to all of our volunteers, our paid personnel that's on the front lines, first responders. It takes a village to raise a child. It takes a whole lot of cooperation within the county between the volunteers and paid personnel to take care for the safety of our citizens. And we are very appreciative for all of them. It, yes, sir.
I just want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Before we end.
Yeah, okay.
Going back to your comment of January 16th for a meeting.
January 6th.
Oh, January 6th, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I thought 16th and 17th, there was something else that I hadn't yet, and I was just, I'm sorry.
If I said 16th, I apologize.
You said, you said 6th.
Yeah, I just misunderstood.
It's 6th, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Everything's good.
That's what I'll forget. December 7th, 1941.
Oh, absolutely. And just on the other side of things, my father was at Pearl Harbor, December 7th, 1941. And 1944, talking about the fire, my mother's family lost everything they had in a fire. They were at church, but they came out, they saw it glow in the sky, and the fire was their house. And they lost everything in 1944. So it is, it is an emotional event, I'm sure. Here are no other commissioner reports and recommendations.
We move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn and a second and a further discussion. Here are none. Those in favor of the motion signify so per saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We are adjourned.